I'm gonna call this meeting in the Longdale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask our city clerk to give the roll call, please. Madam City Clerk.
Good evening. Mayor Proton Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Mayor Fulan Myers?
Here.
Everyone is present.
Thank you, madam. I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Hoffman Gorman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And we will feel inspired today. Keep everybody on the spot.
Gentlemen, please remove your hats and please recite along with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Thank you. In the absence of our pastor, who's probably caught up in traffic, I'm just gonna ask that the Almighty God, that He bless us tonight and bless us as we make decisions on behalf of the cities in the best interest of the city, as He continue to guide us and protect us, protect those who also serve us, all of our employees, all of our civil servants. We ask that you bless all of our residents and our business owners as well. Amen.
Good job, Robert. Okay, let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from Lieutenant Leo. He's here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I am here tonight to present the public safety report for October 5th through October 17th. On October 5th, at about 10:00 PM during the City Council meeting, Special Assignment Officers Deputies Bauer and Amora saw a car doing donuts on 147th Street between Mansell Avenue and Gribella Avenue. The deputies conducted a traffic stop, cited the driver for unsafe speed, failing to stop at a stop sign, and driving on the wrong side of the road. Driving recklessly is dangerous to the public. Please continue to abide by all traffic laws, especially now with many children back in school. Our deputies will strictly enforce traffic laws to keep the public safe. This concludes my report, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the public safety report? All right. Thank you, Lieutenant. Now, let's hear from our Fire Department. Let's have an update from our Fire Department Battalion Chief, Captain.
Battalion Chief.
There you go. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. Wesley Anzai, Battalion Chief for LA County Fire Department. Thank you for having me. Little background on myself, I was a captain here at Fire Station 21 for about seven years, promoted a few years back, about seven years ago. And after a tour throughout LA County, I'm back here in Battalion 18. This is my second year in Battalion 18, and hope to finish off my career here. As far as the Fire Department, as you know, we average about 240 calls a month, about 90% of them being medical-related calls, and about 10% being fire and other calls. We're on track for that number currently this month, and our response time's roughly five minutes. No big issues within the Fire Department, and just happy to be here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for being here. We appreciate you. Any questions of the Fire Department's report?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
Thank you for being here and keeping us up to date. I appreciate knowing what's going on in our city, and you play a really big part of it. As an employee formerly of the emergency room at Little Company Ameria, my hand goes out to you for all that you do in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, it's now time for oral communications. Oral communications is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the calendar, not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to this body, we ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, just approach the podium. If you would, start with your name. In about two minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Let's have our first speaker. Yes, ma'am.
Hi there. Deana, resident. I just wanna state, Longdale High and the traffic situation that goes on over there, even today, a guy felt the need that he could just stop on Inglewood Avenue, turn on his hazards while he waits for his little children from high school to cross the street. Same way in the morning, same way in the afternoon. It's become quite a hazard, even 147th before Inglewood Avenue in the morning. They all sit in the cars until the light turns green. When the light turns green, then the kids exit the car so they can make the walk. So, when he just gave us a safety report about traffic and speeding and stuff, how come we don't, do we have a motor, or do we have more traffic? You guys could be cleaning up over there with these cars, and these people that just, you know, they have to drive their kids to high school, and they just stop on Inglewood Avenue, both ways though. And it's in the morning and the afternoons when the school gets out. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, City Council, for allowing me a chance to speak. First, I'd like to congratulate our, two high schools have real good football teams this year, and we should be proud of them. One of the things I wanted to talk about is the homeless in the city. There's a lot of issues, and I wonder if people ask them what their issues are, because they know what's going on. Drugs and alcohol could be a real problem, because I know personally that with those sort of situations, you're not done with them until you're done. People can try to help you all you want, but a man, what was it that was said, "A man convinced against his will is of the same opinion still," and that's what happens. Drugs and alcohol is a real bad problem. Not saying that everybody who's homeless is on drugs and alcohol. I get a little sick reading the newspaper and seeing that, we throw money after that problem, time after time, and all we do is shoot ourselves in the foot, and it doesn't work. County services, I was wondering if they're fully utilized, if there's somebody in charge taking care of that. Like I said, not every person or family have addictions, they just have problems. We need to find out what we can do to help them in this city. It's a problem in every city. Maybe some of the high school kids would have some answers. We don't know. Nobody's asked them if they could come up with stuff. I did wanna ask about Inglewood Avenue on the Redondo Beach side, right at Manhattan Beach Boulevard. I have almost been front-ended by a head-on collision by people who wanna turn left on Manhattan Beach Boulevard, going towards Manhattan Beach Boulevard. They cut across into opposing traffic, and I know that people wanna go home. Maybe that left turn lane's too small, or maybe we need an island so they can't do that. But it scared me a few times, and it happens every day. You could set a police car there and give out tickets like crazy, and I know it's an expensive ticket. My wife got a, going over the double line once, and it was very expensive to erase it and all that stuff. In our city, I've noticed lately that dumping's becoming a real big problem. For some reason, you know, I live along railroad tracks, and people just bring their leftover furniture and everything else and just...
Thank you, sir.
Randall Abram. There is still an abundance of Airbnb properties operating in Longdale. A review of the short-term rental website lists almost at least half a dozen properties in Longdale on any given day. However, as they change daily, this whole number of different properties available on any given month is probably closer to 20. These illegal rentals impact the community as they're operating without the regulations imposed on the ordinary homeowner. Street parks in Longdale is at a premium, and illegal short-term rentals can have a significant impact on this as well. The takeaway from legal revenue that hotels in Longdale contribute to the city's general fund. There are safety and health concerns with Airbnbs that are not widely known. Former Airbnb employees revealed that the company deals with thousands of sexual assault allegations every year. Bloomberg has reported that the vast majority of assaults are not publicly reported, as there's been a cover-up by the company and the host. Airbnb spends about $50 million a year trying to make things right for guests and hosts who've had bad experiences. One woman received a $7 million settlement after she said she was raped, Bloomberg reported. Unregulated Airbnbs can also pose a significant risk of violence to communities. In August of this year, hundreds of teenagers descended upon a Sunnyvale home where an 18-year-old was shot and killed at a short-term rental. Two years before that, a mass shooting killed five young people at an Airbnb at Orinda on Halloween. In response to these tragedies, earlier this month, the governor signed Senate Bill 60 that allows cities to impose penalties up to $5,000 for violations of a city's short-term rental ordinance. I would request that the city of Longdale look into updating its municipal code with the stiff-fine process to deter proliferation of Airbnbs. I do realize that the city's reactive approach to enforcement is perhaps a fear of being accused of selective enforcement. However, spending some time on the internet and going after these providers would not be selective enforcement if all are shut down, or is it my job to report them to code enforcement? Many residents may not be aware that short-term rentals are outlawed in Longdale. There should be an information campaign on the city's website in the Longdale lane and postings throughout the city. As with illegal fireworks, posting street signs indicating Airbnbs are outlawed throughout the city could be instrumental in spreading the word along with the electronic billboard off the freeway. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Fariba Soleimani. I am a minority shareholder and manager of South Bay Enterprises, corner of Redondo Beach Boulevard and Hawthorne. The reason that I'm here today is the gang activity going on in our center, where this afternoon, Mr. Reyes joined me on the site, and we walked around the center. And I would like to hand over, just, this is a fraction of the graffiti and tagging signs that has been going on in our center. I don't know how I can get this appreciated, and also I have another set. This is getting beyond our ability to handle. We have a full plant order from 7:30 AM till 3:30, and all he does is washing graffiti and cleaning feces and urine in the staircases. We have homeless on daily activities, on a daily basis, shooting herring right in front of their dermatologist's office, and when they're approached, they become aggressive. Police has been extremely helpful. They do come to the center, but the situation is getting out of hand, especially right now, we're dealing with this gang activity, and we don't know what to do. Apparently, there are three set of gang activity going on, where one comes and paints one set of codes, the other writes over it, and the other puts a stab, sign of stab, across it. I'm sure Mr. Reyes can help us with this situation and explain to the council members what is going on. But the other issue is the homeless camps. We have literally, every night, we have camps set up on the second floor of our shopping center, and in the morning, we have to clean up, that's where the porter is, that asks them to leave. Sometimes, we have to give them money. They ask for money. The other day, I had to pay somebody $50 until he leaves, but we have to do that, because we get complaint from our tenants, and by the time we called the police, we know this is not just a 911 situation, so they show up when they do. And we're doing whatever we can to help our tenants not to leave us. We have one-third of the tenants not paying rent, some paying reduced rent, and two have left, and we had a prospect that looked at the center on Saturday of two weeks ago, and there was a homeless there, and said it was a hair salon, a well-known one, and said, "We cannot afford having our customers here at night during nighttime. This is not safe." We are suffering. I'm here today pleading for some sort of intervention, first and foremost, to handle this gang situation that is going on. If you would only look, I made two sets of copies, so you can look at what is written and how it is written. These are, it's MS-13, Lennox, and West, based on my limited knowledge of what I could see.
I don't know if you understand, sorry.
The turn is expired, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I'm at the range, but there is another one, the homeless, I would like to be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Susan Partovi. I'm here on behalf of the employees of the dental office in that center. Every morning that I come to work, I have to face homeless people in the parking lot and camping out their feces, their urine, it smells, and it's really disgusting to, every morning, to face that and come to work. At night, I have to ask a male assistant to escort me to my car, because it's very dangerous. There are people, I don't know if they're gangs or they're addicts, I don't know who they are. They are shooting herring in the staircase, and when I asked them, two weeks ago, I asked one of them, "Please move from here. This is where we, you know, where we work." He got upset, and he threw his needles at me. Thank God it didn't hit me, but I had to run away and go to my car. So, it has become very dangerous. It's not safe to work there. Every day, we even have to escort our patients to go to their car, no matter what time of the day, either morning or at night. Tuesdays and Wednesdays, we're open until 7 o'clock, and it gets dark. And if people are not feeling safe, they won't come to the office. So, this is our issue. I really don't feel safe anymore there, and it has become very, very dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're gonna close public comments and bring it up to the Diocese for us. Comments from the council. Miss here, Frau Suarez. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, mayor. Just wanted to say thank you to everybody that came out and spoke today. I'll touch on one topic. This has also been a topic, I'm glad it came up. It's been a topic I've been wanting to explore more. I know, and staff can weigh in on this, I know we recently came up with a plan on how to address homeless activity, but each city, and I sit on another board where the South Bay Cities Council of Government, they've worked with certain cities to draft a comprehensive homeless plan with regards to each city, and they've even gotten some regions to get together to kind of discuss a larger plan. I think that's definitely something we need to explore. I know also there's issues on how you go about cleaning encampments, which you technically have to provide designated beds to at least offer to the homeless, so that is something that we would have to discuss if we wanna clean encampments, even that. I recently attended a seminar, and they gave a great presentation regarding homeless, and one of the questions did come up of, you know, there's been so much money by the county that's been poured into these, but we're not really seeing the results. And I think one of the speakers brought up how large LA County is, and how it's kind of hard for them to get those funds to areas to actually address the issues that are happening. So, I definitely think we need to look into beefing up our plan, look at how to address actually having designated beds that, you know, whether it's our city or maybe partnering up with a neighboring city. I know Redondo Beach and Torrance specifically have those pellet shelters, so we need to definitely look at, we're pretty small with limited resources, but maybe we can have a conversation with the COG and see if there's resources for us, and how to address that issue. But with that, I'll pass it along.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Cuevas.
Thank you, everybody that spoke today. Piggybacking to Bernadette's homeless remarks, I would like to see a committee or a commission put together to this, to work on a program to either relocate these homeless. A lot of them, I worked with them for a whole year at a property where I worked at, and a lot of them don't want the help, but I would say 25% of them want the help. We just need to show that we wanna be there for them. I know Long Beach has some beds, and the sheriff department, I believe, takes them to Long Beach or offers them. I know in LA, LA County drives them to shelters. I don't know if our sheriffs have that program here, but I know Long Beach does have beds available. Once again, it would be a good idea for us to have a committee or a commission to discuss some kind of program for our homeless. As far as the traffic on Inglewood, I believe we do have one of our employees standing by Longdale High. He got his picture taken, and it's on Nextdoor, and people are complaining because he's taking license plates and sending them the tickets. So, I know we're working into getting that situation going, but I live on 147th and Fermona. The line goes past Fermona in the morning, so I, we are aware of that. And then, the dumping, it's a big deal. I've called a couple of times Consolidated for pickup, and it's mostly on the railroad tracks by the building, I forget the name of the building, place, material place, but it's in that area that the dumping is happening. And that will be it. Sorry.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoffman Gorman.
I also wanna say thank you to everybody that got up to voice your concerns with going in the city. Deana, Longdale High, great minds think alike, 'cause just today, I addressed this issue, and part of it is, yes, I too saw on Nextdoor what was going on. And I also had had a few people that had called to let me know about what was going on in front. On our last council meeting, we met the new superintendent, and so I can guarantee you that our city staff is currently going to be meeting and finding out what they are doing also with the problem. Michael is aware. He and I have spoke. Kevin and I have spoke about it today. We hear you. We know. And we're looking to move forward on that issue. Gary, the homeless, as these two council people say, and ladies in the back there, you brought up all some really good points. I agree, something needs to be done. This Wednesday night, I'm going to be attending the California Contract Cities, and they are doing a presentation also on homelessness. I want more information on what we can do as a city to slow this thing down and to get them the help, those 25% that are looking for help, and what we can do with the remainders to keep them mobile and not staying in shopping centers and causing problems. Randall, the illegal rentals, I need some more information on that $5,000 for the illegal bed and BnBs. I would like to talk more with you about that, and also, Michael, with you, to see if we have that enforced or what we would have to do. I know we have a couple of places here in the city that every so often, if we're not watching, they'll keep posting their place, and it's, I agree with you, I don't wanna be the Nextdoor neighbor to that location, and I don't want you to be the Nextdoor neighbor to that location. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Proton.
Kinda say I want, I wanna thank everybody who spoke tonight. The ladies touched on everything except for one question. Suzanne, is that your name? Could you come back to the podium for a minute? I have a question for you. About your property. Well, a couple of questions, actually. Do you have security there now?
We have just one person who's in the, in the center who cleans up.
Have you contacted the city staff, like Michael or the city manager cabinet?
The owner. She, I'm the employee of the dental office. I'm not the owner of the center.
Because I know there's an ongoing problem there, 'cause I've called in to Michael Reyes several times of homeless people on the property sleeping and going through all the garbage. So, you have one security at night, or?
We have one security from 7:30 to 3:30. We have him there at 7:30, because we need to have the center cleaned up from the camps, the homeless, the drug, the everything, so when the tenants...
And this is all on private property, private property, right?
It's a private property, yes. They're inside the elevator sleeping.
So, you reached out to Michael Reyes and Kevin Chung? Have you responded?
I have not had the honor of meeting Mr. Chung, but I did have meet Mr. Michael Reyes, and has been most helpful, attentive. Every time we've needed help, he's been there, but I don't know what one person can do. This, that's why I came here to plead for help.
Well, I think our sheriff department should patrol that more often, and I know I, there's graffiti all over the place. I went down the street, I turned into Michael Reyes every day. It's on a box truck, and like you said, they cross out the gang members. One gang, cross it up with another name, cross it up, put some foul language on it, and then move on. I think we should concentrate on this problem there, 'cause there's homeless there every morning, and I know there's graffiti in the alley on the backside, too.
We have drug dealing going on, on the second floor. There are four, three, four cars at night parked, there's communication. Tenants are afraid to even park upstairs.
And people throwing hypodermic needles at employees there, totally wrong, and people taking, making owners and building owners or rent leases pay them money to get out of there is definitely wrong. So, I need that, I'm asking a strong way, the sheriff department, take care of this problem, because this is private property. It's not the homeless they're talking about. This is homeless that are, they don't give a rat's batoot.
They're pretty aggressive. They're very aggressive. I mean, that's why I asked Ms. Partovi to join me today, because I thought it would be best to hear it from a person who experienced what went on. And when we were today with Mr. Reyes on the property, two other tenants, one witnessing blood and heroin shooting in leg, with Mr. Reyes was there. This is all from tenants, not me.
I understand. We need this problem cleaned up ASAP. I don't wanna see no more needles being thrown out. Leasing's a building property, or owners being threatened, bribed, "Give me money, I'll leave." That's horseshit. I'm gonna say it straight out, horseshit. This shouldn't be, no, this shouldn't be happening in Longdale. We had the homeless, yeah, we homeless the street, but these people, they're derelicts. I know a couple of them I confronted when I talked to Michael Reyes, get off the property, and they got a little matty, but they eventually moved. I have a persuasive personality, make a move. But we need this problem taken care of yesterday.
We are willing to do our share. Whatever it is, it needs to be a team effort, and we are willing, we're spending $6,000 to $7,000 a month just to clean up feces, urine, and now with graffiti.
Okay, you contacted, have Sarah, city manager, Michael Reyes, and we'll be out there to help.
I will do that.
'Cause this is crap.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Robert, turn off you.
All right. Thank you for that discussion. Yes, I too wanna thank all of those who spoke tonight. Going back to the issue in front of the high school, I mean, I've had for, what, for eight years, had to drop my children off at the school, so I understand how, how much traffic is at the school site. But I also understand that the curve is painted red because it's a public safety hazard to drop students off or let anyone out, out of your car during the peak hours of the day. That's why it's painted red. If, even if it wasn't painted red, it's still a hazard to drop people off there, but we painted it red so that it can get your attention not to drop people off, whether students or whomever, especially during the peak hours of the day. So, for, I mean, I understand how people, how it may, people may feel are, when they get a ticket in the mail or what have you, or they see the staff taking pictures. Imagine if the staff had to write you a ticket, and you actually parked there, how much of more of a hazard that would be? You know, if the staff have to actually write the ticket out and interface with, you know, the driver during peak hours of the day, that would be even more of a hazard, which is why, which is one of the reasons why the staff is allowed to take, take pictures. And most of the time, people are aware that, you know, you're dropping someone off at a red curve or what have you, and that's why a lot of times, they may zoom off or what have you, and not really realizing that, yes, you may get a picture in the mail. I think one thing we, a ticket in the mail, one thing we might wanna... I think one thing we, a ticket in the mail, one thing we might want to do is, is post a sign letting people be aware that, yeah, you may not have interaction with the code enforcer or the parking enforcer, but you could be subject to receiving a ticket in the mail. So don't be surprised when you see if you park there and let someone out and you get a, subsequently receive a ticket in the mail. I think that will, if, if it's more on people's minds that, yeah, just because someone didn't actually see me, that don't necessarily mean they didn't actually make note of it or what have you. Because it's really a safety hazard. Yes, I agree that we may can talk with the, the school to see what, what they can do. Obviously, unless they're willing to give up some of their property to make the, the lines, not the lines, the, the ability to, to queue, you know, on their property even greater or what have you. Those are kind of decisions that the, the school district would have to make because we don't own those properties or what have you. But the properties as they stand now, we have to make sure that traffic, that is safe for traffic, which is our job. And so that's why it's like that. So I'm open for a discussion with the school district to see if there's any, any type of way we can make it easier for, for parents. I understand the rush hour. I had to do that for eight years and in two more years, I have to do it again for four years, right? Right, so.
Just real quick though. Going, so this was in the afternoon, going north. We kept it pulled over and black for the auto, motorcade. So he stopped and put the tattered down there to block the lane. So when you're turning left or, you know, everybody's backed up.
Okay, well, they do it both on either, either by the, 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 the car shop or either at the curbside in front of the school. We've seen, we've seen it happen both. And either way, it's, it's a hazard. So I'm willing to have a conversation with the school district to see if there's any creative ways. But as it stands now, it is certainly a hazard. And I'd rather someone be inconvenienced, like I have been several times, trust me, dropping off my kids, than have someone have an accident and God forbid a, a children, one of our children have an accident or what have you because it was more convenient to drop them off at the curb. So I want to just say that and thank you for bringing that to our attention, thank you. Mr. White, you mentioned about the homeless situation on particularly the tracks, I mean, the dumping situation particularly by the, by the tracks. When you drive down Condon Avenue, sometimes you can't see the, the amount of items that's dumped because it's kind of like there's a hump over the track. So you got to go on the east side of the track, the other side of the track to really appreciate all of the furniture. And there was a big bean bag out there a few days ago or whatever. I guess people decided bean bags went out 10 years ago or 20 years ago and decided they no longer need it after all. And so, so that was sitting out there. And one day there was a full couch and the love seat and everything was out there or what have you. Some of these are people that obviously live there because I'm not convinced that, you know, strangers are just driving and dropping off, you know, you know, a whole love seat, you know, you know, in, in the bushes and when there's, you know, units right next to it or in close proximity. But that's something we need to work with Public Works and with also the, since it's metro's property, not the city's property, work with metro, you know, on it. Because from the street, you may not see all of the dumping that's on the other side of, of the hill when you just drive over, over the tracks. So if we can work with metro on that, I would appreciate that. And Mr. Randall talked about the short-term rentals. I'm just curious as to know, what is our ordinance on the short-term rentals? And I know there's been some, some court decisions on short-term rentals and the city's ability to regulate them. Are we in good, good standing in regulating short-term rentals?
This is the first time it's come up, so I will take a look at the ordinance and I'll get an email out to the council by the end of the week in terms of where we are and what we may or may not need to do, sir.
Okay, great, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, just to follow up, it, it is something that we are enforcing. We, we do have an ordinance that prohibits them. We, we have been enforcing them when, when it's been brought to our attention. One thing that has been difficult for us with one particular case where there was a situation of a property owner using it for short, short-term rentals. We did address it with the property owner. It was corrected. A long-term tenant is in that property, that, that home now.
Okay.
So it's no longer a problem in that way. However, on the website for that particular company, there's, there's no way for the property owner to have the previous ad taken off of the website. So that's, that's been a problem. But we have made some, you know, we, we have done an audit. So from time to time, we've gone back to check to see whether or not it is still being rented for short-term purposes and it's not. So, but that's, that's one particular case, but, you know, we can look at others that come up as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Two other observations. We talked about the homeless and the funding for homeless. I'm interested to know, and I've, I've asked this question a few times of both LASSA, if I'm getting the acronym right, which is basically the county's homeless authority as well as the South Bay Cog. And it's still hard for me to, to be able to. I have not received a report on Measure H, which was funding, tax, funding for cities. And although the money may not necessarily be going directly to the cities, but each city was, was levied a, a tax that would go towards funding homeless programs and activities. And I have yet to see any type of analysis as to how much money is being allocated to the city of Longdale and what has been the, the efforts of LASSA on behalf of, I'm saying LASSA because I'm getting the airport mixed up, on behalf of the city of Longdale as well as the South Bay Cog. What has really been done on our behalf, not the region. Now, I know we have, we, we have the system where when we see a, a person that appears to be homeless, in some cases, you know, they actually are homeless, where we can enter them into the system, IHOPS, a hops is what they call it, just hops. And then the county will go out, the, the authority will go out and attempt to provide services. A lot of times these services, as Councilwoman Quavis has mentioned, are turned down, but they do go out to, to ask if they would like some services or what have you. But I'm not really sure how successful they have been. I know from time to time, they come before this council and they give a report and the report is kind of general. And I've always said that, yeah, if you have, let's say if you have one person standing in front of your, your, your business, a homeless person standing in front of your, your business all day and all night or what have you. And they're successful at getting that person off the streets, wherever the person happened to, happened to be. Only to be substituted by another person. I believe in their system, that one person they got off the street, they'll celebrate that and it might be worth it celebrating. But if you're a business owner, there is no celebration because the replacement has taken up resident in front of their business owner. And that's what I keep trying to stress that it, to me, that's not success if one homeless person is only substituted by another homeless person. Whether that homeless person decided to move on themselves or the agency got them help or what have you before, as we're concerned and I'm concerned, that's not success. Success is when you get the homeless person, you get them services, they're no longer in front of the, the, the business and there's no substitute. There's no one taking their, their place. That's success and that's what we have not been able to reach yet. At least in my opinion, we haven't been able to reach that. The city manager is aware that, I've seen him, you know, texts and, and take pictures of homeless, you know, encampments and I've seen them, seen them grow. I just seen one yesterday, the Spires, someone's got a, a little tent, makeshift tent owned by Spires. Saw that, sent it to the city manager and had them to go out and, and take a look at it. We do have to be as, as aggressive as the law will allow and as compassionate as our hearts will allow at the same time. But we, we can't wait for the housing, the, the homeless authority because I haven't really seen anything. I don't know how much Measure H money and how, how, how much resources is going allocated to, to the city of Longdale. Because they'll talk about the whole South Bay region if they stand, stand before us today like they have several times. And to me, that doesn't do anything for me because no one elected me to represent anyone outside of the, you know, our boundaries. And so even though that's great, but it doesn't do anything for me to know whether or not they're effective. So if we can get a report specifically on Measure H, hopefully I'm getting the, the alphabet correctly, and the activities of the South Bay Cog. Reason why I say the South Bay Cog, because they tend to head up a lot of these activities or coordinate with the housing authority, I mean, the, the homeless authority on these issues. So that's my concerns there. The next and final one, I want to thank the representatives from the, the South Bay, it was Enterprises, the official name of the South Bay Enterprises. And I know exactly what you're talking about, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. The people hanging out, hanging out there and that, that, that is a problem. I mean, we have to, we have to be partners. You have to have security and probably more than one. So it's, it may cost you some, some money to have a security because it is private property. But we have to be partners with you to make sure that we are monitoring those as well and that we're not making it comfortable for the homeless or people using drugs or whatever, whether they be homeless or not, to, to camp out and to be, provide a nuisance to patrons and business owners. So we, so I agree with you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, that we have to be partners in that. And this gang situation, I mean, I mean, I saw that, you, you mentioned the graffiti and that there, there are gangs. I mean, I don't know if that means that there's a gang problem or it's just one person that's in a gang that's writing their graffiti, another person that's in a gang, but not necessarily quote unquote like what they would call beef, you know, you know, on the streets that's going on. I don't know if that's the case and I haven't heard that's the case. I'm sure the markings are gangs if it, because we can distinguish, at least I can distinguish Lennox and Longdale. But regardless of what the graffiti is, they should be abated and if there's a way that we can capture, if you will, those who are doing so, we should prosecute them to the, to the fullest. You want to add anything on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I can appreciate what the two representatives have brought forward. I, I've seen some of the messages sent by, I'm sorry, Ms. Soleimani and Michael, Mr. Reyes and I have had several conversations about that property. And we, coincidentally, we are meeting tomorrow morning with Lieutenant Leo. So this is something that we'll, we'll address with them. We'll also continue to work with, with you to, to try to come up with solutions. But I, I did hear some, some buzzwords there with gangs and gang graffiti, homelessness with drug activity. So, you know, we'll be talking with the sheriff's department tomorrow morning about maybe some, you know, use of our special assignment officers to work with you in, in, in that particular area of town. Also maybe some directed patrols. Of course, this is things that we'll talk about with the captain tomorrow. But, you know, one of the things that we do focus on with one of our sheriff's department details, our special assignment officers, is specifically on gang activity. So we'll, we'll see what type of graffiti we've got there and see if that is a problem. And we'll kind of go from there, but we, we will work directly with you.
Okay, thank you for that. Yes, ma'am.
On those photographs that she gave us, are they colored by chance that we can see? Because color also means something, being very well done told. Black and red.
Yeah.
The photos are nice, but, but they're written, they're colored, they're numbered.
Okay, we, we have our sheriff department take a look at it. They're pretty well versed on a, a gang graffiti. Thank you. With that, I'll close public comments and council, council member comments and we will continue our agenda. We are now on the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
I have a question on one of the items.
Yes, ma'am.
It, it doesn't need to be pulled for discussion, but I just had a question regarding, hopefully Julian can help. Number two, F2. It mentioned in the report that neighboring cities will be contributing their portion for Redondo Beach. Do we have agreements in place or is that just a verbal and then we're going to bill them? How do we make sure that we get?
Currently, we do have a verbal agreement. Once the funding agreement with the metro is finalized, based on that amount for finalizing the funding agreement with the other cities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. What is the, what is the pleasure concerning the consent calendar?
Well, if there's no, there's no practices, I'm making motion to, to accept the consent cards written.
Okay, the motion's been made that we approve the consent calendar by Kearney.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Quavis. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing them with the council, please vote on the consent calendar.
Motion passes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on our agenda is item six, a change order concerning the annual street improvement project. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, honourable members of the council. This evening, staff would like to request for approval of change order number one for fiscal year 2020, 2021 annual street improvement project. Currently, Sequo contractor is working on the 2020, 2021 annual street improvement project on several streets along Manhattan Beach, Frontage Road, Ford, the cul-de-sacs, 106 First Street and 167 Street. They're repairing close to 142,000 square foot of the streets using CDBG fund, SB1 fund, Measure M, and some general fund for the MOE. Recently, this staff discovered about $600,000 on the, in the part of 2009 tax allocation bond fund that needs to be spent, possibly spent as soon as we can to possible refinancing of the bond fund because of the low interest rate right now. In addition, staff also found some of the streets that are in that condition that needs a, a, a quick repair. And this is not part of the 2021 and 22 annual street project that we're planning for the second part of this year. We, staff have provided some pictures of the existing condition of the streets as part of the staff reporting attachment. We reached out to Sequo for cost proposal for these areas, which includes 156 Streets, 165th Street, 167th, Condon and Rixford, totaling about 90,000 square feet. Cost proposal from Sequo was $547,030. And that, that price aligns with the bid proposal they submitted back in August 20 when they got the, when they, when they received this, this project. One of the benefits that we have is that we will not be paying any mobilization or demobilization fee because of the, the original contract. We also got a proposal from SA Associates, who provides the additional insurance, additional inspection services and that cost will be not to exceed an amount of $36,000. So with that, staff would like to recommend the city council to approve the change order number one for the construction to Sequo contractor in amount of $547,030. And approve the change order number one for inspection services to SA Associates in amount of $36,000. And approve the contingency amount of $82,060. And approve the allocation of the 2009 tax allocation bond fund to the fund of $60,000, $600,000 to the street improvement. The staff has raised a question.
Very good. Any questions on the staff report?
I have one, Robert.
Yes, sir.
On the original bid, we have, the contingency was what, 80, 70?
Original bid for the contractor.
Which one? Let's look.
It's on page one, $973,400.
So the contingency went up, change order number one, $82,060? What was the, the, so we spent $146,000, I'm saying $150,000 for the original bid. And we're doing half of that and it's costing us $82,060. You times that by two, that's what the. You times that by two, that's a $164,000. Why is there a price difference between the original and the addition of 547?
As far as contingency, both are around 15%. So $146,000 is about 15% of $973,000. And the $82,000 is about 15% of $547,030, which is the original.
Why is it less more?
It is 15% of $547,000.
It's 15% of $547,000, correct?
Correct.
The top one's 15% of $973,000.
Correct, that's $146,000.
Why is it more for less? We're doing a change order, and it's costing us $82,000, a little over half a million dollars. But the original bid is almost a million dollars, and the contingency is only $74,500. It should be less, not more.
If we did a calculation of 15% of $973,000, we calculated to be $146,000. And again, the 15% of 547 came up to be about $82,000. It's not more than 15%.
It is more.
Again, also the contingency is not a, it's not a money that is designated. It will be spent in case of a...
And usually in City of Landale, we always spend it. But I just want to know why we're paying $82,000 for projects that are half a million dollars? And for a million dollar project, our contingency is $74,000. Why is it, what is it, $8,000 more? For a less project that's costing us less? I don't think the math is right. I really don't.
So I'm trying to make sure I follow you. Are you saying because a project is a half a million dollars, it's less than the...
There's a million dollars.
Okay.
The contingency is $74,500. Your change order is half, a little over half a million dollars. And contingency is $82,000. Why is it less more?
Sir, I think I have the answer, and I think it was some unfortunate drafting by staff. If you look, the top three is construction bid amount, then contingency, then inspection. On the bottom is the change order, which would be the construction work, then inspection, then contingency. So they flipped contingency and inspection between top and bottom. So across the top, the contingency is actually the second one, which is the 146, and inspection is 74. But on the bottom, because they didn't stay consistent, it's confusing.
Oh, I see what you're saying there, yeah.
And I can totally see why the council would be confused by that.
Well, again, it's still more than a million dollars or half a million dollars. The top, you divide 146 by two, that's $73,000. This one's 82. I really do, I can't comprehend why it's more, more is less. You're paying more for less.
Paying more for less of a project?
I just did the quick calculation. It does compute to 15% for each one.
The first one?
Yes, for both of them.
So both are still 15%?
Okay, that's all I think I have, Robert.
Okay, any other questions on the presentation for the change orders for the street improvement project? Seeing as what is the pleasure of this body concerning Item Six?
I'll make a motion.
Motion's been made by Suarez and...
I'll second it.
And seconded by Kearney. Any discussion on the motion? The council, please vote.
For item number six, motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, could I explain? I think Pat is, I know what Pat is looking at. Pat, the contingency for the first one is 146, not 74.
Okay, granted, I understand that.
Yeah, that's what he's saying about that.
No, he was saying 74.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that had a reverse. But still, that's for a million dollars. The second project, change orders for half a million dollars, but the contingency is up by almost $8,000.
Yeah, but if you do the math, it still comes out that way.
I'm doing the math myself, Suarez, so it's okay.
Okay, let's move on to Item Seven, updates to the purchasing policy. Who's going to give the staff report?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. The item before you is to implement changes to the purchasing policy that were requested by consensus at a previous city council meeting. At that meeting, City Council desired to see three modifications to the policy. Number one, lower the city manager award threshold to $25,000 to keep in line with surrounding cities. Number two, make each department responsible for maintaining a vendor slash bidder list. And three, ensure emergency authority to the city manager to award over the proposed $25,000 threshold. Staff has incorporated these recommendation, recommended modifications into an ordinance and resolution amending the purchasing policy. If approved, the purchasing thresholds would reflect the following. Department award, also known as over the counter, would be up to $1,000. Department award with quotes would be up to $5,000. City manager award with quotes, up to $25,000. And city council award for purchases greater than $25,000. Language has also been added to make each department responsible for vendors list and that the city manager award may exceed $25,000 during a state of emergency or any unforeseen catastrophe. This concludes staff's report. Available for any questions?
I just have one quick question. You used the phrase "a state of emergency." Do we mean in case of an emergency or a quote unquote "state of emergency," which usually have to be declared?
So it would be both, so a state of emergency or an unforeseen catastrophe, which would also be an emergency.
So a state of emergency sounds like that's different from an emergency.
Correct.
Or urgency.
Yes, sorry, but I believe when I reviewed this, what I understood the city clerk to mean, and if I have this wrong, we can change this on the record right now at first reading. And it will be a technical change, just to clarify the language, so we don't have to bring it back. But I understood him to mean that a state of emergency would be proclaimed by the state of California, the county of Los Angeles, or the city of Landale. An unforeseen catastrophe would be essentially an unproclaimed emergency, where something happened that requires an emergency purchase. It would still be reported to the council, but you wouldn't have to come in and declare the state of emergency in order for action to be taken. And if the council's okay with that, fine. If not, if you want to have an emergency, meaning to declare the state of emergency before we go over, then we can simply line out "or unforeseen catastrophe" and continue moving.
Okay, let me pause after a question. Let's hear from Councilwoman Suarez on that.
I have a question. I thought that the whole reason we waited to vote at the last meeting was because we wanted information on the past transactions that were over $15,000. But I don't think I saw that in the report.
Yeah, I'll try to address that. So there was different, the conversation went in different ways at the last meeting. There was some discussion of that list, which we said that we could provide, as well as a possible survey of other cities. But then the conversation turned where it was, if this is, if it's understood already, the consensus of the council, we could move forward with what the council had deemed to be a better number, or better numbers for these types of purchases. So staff went forward on that basis, knowing what the consensus of the council was. But if the council would like to see some more analysis, we can certainly provide that.
I was just under the impression that, I mean, do we have a number? How many times it's been used over?
So we did do some analysis, and we do have a, I didn't bring it with me today. We do have a list. I think we went back over the last three years, is that correct, Matt?
That's right.
Three years.
Three fiscal years.
And we do have a list. It's probably in the neighborhood, and this is anything from, how much was it, over?
$15,000. Although there's sprinkled in some other numbers that can be easily erased from that.
Do we have a rough number?
I would say rough number is, was probably three or four pages of, on the list. So maybe 50, 60 purchases in that neighborhood.
Over 15?
Over $15,000.
Okay, okay. And were they already budgeted amounts? Okay, so those are already budgeted, okay. Because, I'm sorry, I thought that was the whole reason that we extended this to the next meeting. And then the other question that I had was, I have one other question, but it's losing me for the minute. Let me think about it real quick, if anyone else has questions.
Okay, you can think about it.
Oh, I can.
Yes.
I remember it. Okay, so what I thought then the conversation was, is we're going to set an amount, and then the next amount in case there's some emergency. For example, in the past, we had city hall emergencies, so I think we wanted it two-tiered. And I believe the mayor had brought that suggestion forward. So is that what the emergency is only in the state of an emergency, that it's declared, you know, some...
The way it's written right now is exceeding $25,000 during a state of emergency, like our city attorney said, or an unforeseen catastrophe, which is kind of not proclaimed. It's similar to when city hall flooded, it just kind of gets done as expedient as possible.
Okay, yeah, because that just confused me, because I really, that's the whole reason why I thought we were waiting, because I was looking at the amounts, and I think that they need to stay at the 999.999. And the, instead of doing the whole numbers, I think they need to stay at the decimal points. And then, from what I remember, we discussed the $25,000 as the max that we would do, but I don't think that was the final number we wanted to look at. Because my whole thing was, you know, we do want to be comparable to other areas, but at the same time, we have to look at our city specifically and kind of see, you know, what ours look like. You know, I think I even looked up some other cities that they're even way lower. I mean, I met a city where theirs was, well, they were really small, they only had three staff members, but theirs was like $7,000 or something. But it specifically had to do with the city that you're in. Because I look at Carson, and I think $25,000, they're a lot bigger than our city. And the only reason I bring this forward too is because I attended an ethics training, and they brought up that technically speaking, it's even legal to give, like, if I have an in-law, they can even still, we could accept a contract from them, and it's technically not illegal, might be unethical. But say, for instance, I have a family member and are, you know, I'm like, hey, let's give them the contract. Technically speaking, there's really nothing that puts it out for public discussion. I'm just thinking of not just this council, but in the future, it's to safeguard against, you don't know who could come on, and I think that the lower your thresholds are, the better. The other thing is, is from what I understand is, if you give contractors a lower threshold, they're going to be very cognizant about the amounts that they're bringing forward. Because if it's subject to a public discussion, they're going to be very, very careful about the numbers they're giving. And that's the only reason why I think it's important. I do love putting in the bidder, the vendor's list. I was surprised that we did away with that. I really thought that that was the standard practice. So I think that the lower they are, I mean, at least you can go upwards versus if it's already kind of high, lower. I would suggest we put it down to 15, if the rest of the council's okay with that. And then, you know, in the future, if it's really an issue, we can look at increasing that amount.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, I wanted to share, go ahead. I want to add to Suarez's comments about maybe 15. For some reason, I also thought that we would do a two-tiered approach. In my mind, I was thinking 10, I think 15 was mentioned as well. And then the next tier was, I think it was, I think we said 25 or 30. We said something to that effect.
I actually have looked in my notes, and it's set 10,000.
Yeah, see, so it's 10, but then the next step would be, if the situation warranted, would be up to 30. I think it was 30. 25, 25. That's what I always thought we was going to be on C, so doing a state of emergency. But it does say right here, doing the state of emergency. Unforeseen catastrophic for $25,000 limit, not to be exceeded. So $25,000 is the limit, but doing a state of emergency. But doing the regular course of business, I think we should have an amount for a regular course of business, non-emergency, which is the 10,000, I guess we talked about.
Wait, I'm okay with 15.
Yeah, I'm okay with 15.
15, and then do the...
Well, then this clause would stand not to exceed the 25, that's when the emergency, the 25. What do you think? Yes, sir.
We're going to set the city manager's award at 15,000, so I'm hearing. And then city council award in case of emergency to 25, plus 25? Is that the way I'm reading?
Well, you'd have to do like a cent over, just so that it's clear. So like 15, and then goes the city council at maybe 15,001 cent or something like that, right?
So we do, city manager 15,000, city council award for state of emergency?
Well, then if it's going to the city council in the case of an emergency catastrophic, we don't want to put a cap on it, because we are the policymakers. That could be $100,000 if it warrants. I think the idea is what we were trying to achieve is to put a cap on contracts or expenditures that are not required to come before this council. And so if there's an emergency, and it's $50,000 emergency, if we put that, we put 25 in here, then we're stuck.
That's true.
In this emergency, then we have to undo what we did.
I think at this point, we're making enough changes that we're going to bring back, bring this back for first reading again. So please continue the conversation. We won't try to tailor anything tonight. Keep going and give us all the direction that you want to give us, so that we can bring you back exactly what you need.
I think just the numbers are changing, though. I don't know why that needs to be brought back.
We're just changing the one number.
Well, yeah, we're changing the 25 to 15.
And the city council award, like...
Right, and then we don't need a number for the...
Yeah, the emergency is just...
Because they have to go before the council anyway. What do you think, Rob? Counsel, what do you think?
So both the ordinance and the policy will go 15,000 instead of 25,000 for city manager authority. And during a state of emergency or unforeseen catastrophe, the $15,000 limit may be exceeded. Does the council want to add, and this is a policy, so we don't need to do a first reading, we can simply make this change. Does the council want to add in Section 2F a limit, even in state of emergency or catastrophe?
But in the state of emergency or catastrophe, that's coming before the council, for council approval.
That's not the way it's written right now, sir. Right now, it says during the state of emergency or unforeseen catastrophe, the limit under the city manager's authority may be exceeded.
Then the answer is yes.
So then you do want a limit, so that $15,000 limit may be exceeded. What limit would the council like in that circumstance? So that if there is a state of emergency, there still is a limit in place.
I'm okay with the 49999.99. Or basically 50,000.
I'm going to say 25,000.
But if it floods, it might be more than...
Okay, then we can give authorization to go higher than that. But I'm not comfortable handing somebody $50,000, $50,000.
Well, I mean, in that case, we'd have to have a formal meeting, right? I mean, nowadays, too, you can technically still do them over Zoom. They still allow for that. I mean, so it's a little more flexible than trying to get everybody in the same room, if that's the case.
Yeah, my whole thing is, if it's really, use a catastrophe is pretty much unforeseen most of the time. And most of the time, it's probably going to cost you, you know, more than $25,000. You know, if this place floods, I can guarantee that's going to be more than $25,000, or if the roof caved in for whatever reason. So 50, for me, sounds pretty reasonable. So fifty, for me, sounds, sounds pretty, um, reasonable, because it definitely have to be a catastrophe or a state of emergency, and not just a course of business.
So agreeing with forty-nine-nine-nine-nine, correct?
Yeah, right under fifty or whatever, yeah.
That's fine.
That's fine.
And just for clarification, the way it was written was change back to whole numbers? Based on staff's recommendation, talking with finance staff, it's a lot easier to see it. That way, we can revert back, that's council's desire to go the ninety-nine-point-nine-nine.
No, that's fine. It would just have to be, though, in the case of the last two, um, you'd have to add a cent, right? That anything over fifteen would go to...
I was doing greater than, we could add a cent.
Okay, that works, thanks. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, it sound like we have a consensus that, um, the, the emergency clause would be up to fifty thousand, right? We rounded it up to fifty thousand. The regular course of business would be fifteen.
Yes, sir. And, and Matt, you...
And then with the last blocks being, um, greater than fifteen thousand dollars, council approval.
Yes.
We need a motion.
And so since that's a policy, uh, issue, we can, we don't need to bring it back, and I'll just entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make the motion.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made by Suarez that we accept the staff report with the appropriate amendments, and seconded by, um, Pro Tem Kern. Is there any discussion on?
And, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, there is, uh, an ordinance as well, so we will have to do a first reading by title on this, sir.
Okay, and we'll do a first reading by title of the motion. You want to read that?
Yes, sir, I'd love to.
Because that should be part of the motion.
Uh, the, the motion, uh, would include ordinance number one-one-eight-one-dash-two-one, and ordinance of the city council of the city of Longdale, California, amending sections three-point-zero-eight-point-zero-four-zero, three-point-zero-eight-point-one-zero-zero, and three-point-zero-eight-point-one-three-zero of chapter three-point-oh-eight of the Longdale Municipal Code pertaining to purchasing. As found in the staff report tonight, with the changes to three-point-oh-eight-point-one-three-zero, uh, B, um, the number shall be fifteen thousand dollars and not twenty-five thousand dollars in lines three and five, and the change to three-point-oh-eight-point-one-three-zero, C, the number shall be fifteen thousand, not twenty-five thousand in line three. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Would the council please vote on the motion?
For item number seven, motion passing to the council.
Thank you. Okay, next item is, item eight, potential councilization of upcoming council meetings. We kind of do this every, every year. On the Christmas Eve and Christmas Day holiday, as well as New Year's holiday, is coming up soon. As such, the city council may wish the council to follow meeting days, um, near the city holidays. I would say that, um, the staff has take, has taken a look at this, and the upcoming, upcoming agenda items, by staff finding that there is no present agenda items for the meetings that's listed, so it won't be any problem if the council do decide to cancel these meeting dates, which are Monday, December the twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, as well as Monday, January third, twenty-twenty-two. So that's Monday, December the twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, and Monday, January third, twenty-twenty-two. Any thoughts on that?
I have a thought.
You have a thought? Okay.
I think we should keep December twentieth and delay the January third. Christmas is on the Saturday this year, so the Monday meeting won't affect us at all. And...
Okay, which one?
Keep December twentieth and cancel January third.
Cancel January third, um, okay. Okay. Okay, I can agree with canceling January third, but I'm kind of open to cancel in December the twentieth as well.
Well, I have a question, because usually we kind of try and keep the agendas light anyways. So it may not even, I mean, I'm wondering, do we anticipate having a lot to discuss on the, uh...
Not according to the staff, it's going to be pretty light. Anyone wants to address that, Mr. City Manager?
Sure. Um, so during our, um, central management team meetings with department heads, we've, we've looked at the calendar, um, over the last few weeks now, um, leading up to this meeting, and, uh, we, we've looked at, um, issues that need to come before the council, and then we've, we've determined that, um, those two meetings, um, if the council chose to go dark, uh, it wouldn't impact our city business. Um, keep in mind, um, as it also stated in the report, that, um, typically, the council, at least in the last year that I've been here, uh, the council has, um, also included the second meeting in November, um, as a meeting to cancel. However, for, for this year, um, staff is not recommending that, uh, that meeting be canceled, because we do have business items that will need to be taken care of on, on that date. So that, um, third meeting was not included with this recommendation.
Thank you for that, Mr. City Manager. Yeah, I would recommend that we, uh, cancel, um, on both dates, because the agenda's going to be very, very light if there was an agenda. Somebody else?
I do have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
In the event that we do need a meeting, we could do a special meeting, if that's the case, if we need to discuss.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think we can take this one by just unanimous consent, um, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it seem like it's the consent of the, the board? Okay, so, so order that we'll cancel, uh, Monday, December the twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, and Monday, January third, twenty-twenty-two. Okay. Let's move on to item nine, Metro Sea Line, formerly known as the Green Line Extension. Let's have an update.
So we're just waiting for the graphics that come up on the screen. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, members of the city council. Um, this item is intended as an update on the proposed Metro Sea Line project, specifically regarding the portion of the project in Longdale. For the benefit of those who might not be familiar with this project, the Sea Line Extension project is the proposed light rail line extension of the existing Metro Green Line that currently terminates in the city of Redondo Beach at the Redondo Beach Station, which is just west of Longdale on Marine Avenue. As shown on the map on the screen, the project would run from, uh, Redondo Beach Station through Longdale and down to the proposed, uh, Torrance Transit Center to the south in the city of Torrance. Within Longdale, Metro is studying two alternative alignments. Um, and as you can see on the map, uh, the two, uh, alternative alignments are shown with the blue and the orange hash marks. Um, alternative one would start at, uh, Artesia Boulevard, um, in Longdale, and run along the Condon Avenue cor- corridor, and then cross both Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Inglewood Avenue as the rail line makes its way to the west. For alternative two, um, that would start at Redondo Beach Boulevard, and then travel north through the center of Hawthorne Boulevard to the south side of the I-four-oh-five freeway, while making its way to the city of Redondo Beach on the west. The project is currently in the environmental phase, and Metro expects to release its draft environmental impact report for public review in the spring of next year. Next slide, please. While it's not certain, um, uh, alternative one, the alternative one alignment through Longdale would seem to be the more economically attractive of the two alternatives, as Metro already owns the right-of-way along the Condon Avenue corridor, and it would not have to acquire additional private property. If alternative one is ultimately secured by Metro, uh, the city is concerned about potential major impacts to the community, especially if the Sea Line is built completely at grade, or in other words, at street level. Such impacts would include, um, as, as what's included in the report, pedestrian and vehicle safety related to the potential at-grade crossings at one-hundred-and-seventieth, one-hundred-and-sixty-second, one-hundred-and-sixty-first, one-hundred-and-sixtieth, one-hundred-and-fifty-ninth, as well as Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Inglewood Avenue. And on the map, you'll see that those intersections are indicated with the, uh, red circles. Uh, in addition, uh, there would be concerns regarding, uh, traffic circulation interruptions as a result of at-grade crossings of the rail line, where, um, the, 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 um, light rail would essentially stop traffic, um, every time it crosses, uh, those, those intersections. Of course, there would be noise, vibration, and visual impacts to residents along the Condon Avenue corridor. Um, there is potential impacts to one of our major businesses, Westwood Building Materials, at the northeast corner of Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Inglewood Avenue. Um, there's concerns about, uh, potential acquisition of private properties through eminent domain, um, as well as the potential loss of recreational activity or opportunity, um, uh, within the Condon Avenue corridor greenbelt. So clearly, these impacts would be much more significant from the existing freight line, uh, used by BNSF that runs a few times per day now. And because of all of these impacts, the city remains opposed to the Sea Line project, but it also recognizes that it's likely to be approved by Metro as it's part of their overall, uh, light rail system in LA County. So considering this, the city has tried to position itself, uh, to obtain the best possible design and mitigation measures to protect the community. Over the last eight months, um, a city council subcommittee, city staff, and metro staff have met regularly to discuss the city's concerns and to develop potential solutions to minimize impacts to Longdale residents and businesses. Next slide, please. Fortunately, these meetings have proven productive. In particular, Metro has heard the city's concerns about at-grade crossings and have made design changes to address this issue. The city let Metro know that at-grade crossings were unacceptable and that they should consider a trench option. Metro agreed to study this option and have determined that a trenching, um, that trenching is a viable option for the Sea Line through Longdale. So this means that, um, at the locations shown in the previous map, the ones that were, uh, indicated with the red circles, the Sea Line could run in a trench underneath the street, uh, intersections, and avoid collisions with pedestrians and vehicles. Of course, we're still learning about, um, the dynamics of a trench option, um, but this option could also help with some of the city's other concerns with noise and vibration impacts to residents. In addition, the city voiced concerns about potential, uh, impacts to the Westwood... Oh, and before I move on, I just want to make sure that you understood. This is a conceptual cross-section of what, um, the Sea Line could look like, uh, through the Condon Avenue corridor if it was in a trench. Of course, this is not the final, it's just a conceptual, but this is just to give you an idea. Uh, the other concern the city voiced was, uh, about the potential impacts to the Westwood Building Materials business at the corner of Inglewood Avenue and Manhattan Beach Boulevard. And there too, uh, it appears that Metro has been able to develop design alternatives to help preserve that business from having to relocate or shut down. And lastly, uh, Metro is continuing with their public outreach efforts. Uh, unfortunately, because of the pandemic, they've only been able to conduct, uh, virtual meetings. Um, even with their latest effort, as you know, uh, a virtual walking tour of Alternatives One and Two, um, they're only able to, um, do that virtually and not meet with the public, um, and interact with them in person. Of course, Metro is doing what they can, given the circumstances. However, virtual, uh, public outreach, this type of virtual public outreach is just not ideal. So what we're hoping is that, um, when Metro will be allowed to conduct their public outreach in person, um, uh, we, at that point, will work with them and ensure that, um, they have multiple, uh, events within Longdale, so that our residents can attend those meetings, learn more about the project, and of course, have their voices heard and, um, have their, their concerns addressed. Um, so the city is hopeful at this point that, uh, we can continue our work with Metro. Um, so far, it's, um, yielded better communications between our agencies, um, and it has also resulted in some project design improvements thus far. So we realize that, um, you know, there's, um, still much work ahead, but, uh, we'll continue to try to do that, um, with Metro. And so with that, I will conclude my presentation and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. City Manager. Any questions of the city manager's Metro report?
Um, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
There are no stops in Longdale, correct?
Uh, there, there will not be a station in Longdale, that's correct. Uh, as of right now, um, apparently, at some point in time, um, a, a station was proposed for Longdale, but that has been, uh, removed from the, from the, from the design.
And you should know that, that it was proposed to be, uh, Westwood Builders Materials, um, on their property or right next to their property, which would effectively put them out of business.
I also would like to add one of the things, uh, to Kevin's report, and I thought he did a great job at, at talking about what we are discussing when we're talking to Metro. One of the things currently that we're in discussion about is trying to find out if it's feasible for part of the trenching to be covered, and how much of it we could have covered. As to also keep it quiet for our neighbors. Thanks. And that's still in, in talks.
Yes, that is in, in talks. Um, I, I, I just want to say, you know, this being like four years or so in the making, um, uh, with, with Metro and the various, um, board, um, members. As people may know, or may not know, that our representative on the board is, um, Mayor, um, James Butts, from the city of Inglewood, actually represents, um, our city and some of the other cities, um, on, on the Metro Board. And we've been talking back and forth with the Metro, and in particular, uh, um, uh, Mr. Butts, especially when he was the, um, the, the chair, about this, um, about this project and our concerns with it. A few years ago, um, Mayor Garcetti made the, the pledge to underground, um, this, um, at a COG meeting. Um, then council member Osborne and I was, was hell-bent on holding him to it. We believed at that time it was, let's put it this way, it was a mechanism to make sure that measure that they were, um, passing, trying to pass, actually pass, um, with, with, um, the help of the electives on the South Bay Card. Um, and then after it passed, all of a sudden, you know, there was no talks of having it trenched any longer, or underground, um, any longer. So, so, so we had to continue to, to put the, the pressure on them. Um, but I, I am happy to say that we have made some progress. Um, we have said from day one that, that we're not, um, in support of this project. For one, because it does not bring any economic opportunity to the city of, of Longdale. But we do understand, um, as well, that is Caltrans, um, right-of-way, should they, um, go down their existing right-of-way, and as a public agency with, with, I mean, a tremendous amount of power and authority that's given to them by the state legislature, um, that it's in our best interest is to work and negotiate with, um, Caltrans to come up with the best project that we can come up with that's going to have the least, um, adverse effect on our community, and at the same time, provide opportunities for our residents to, to take the Metro, uh, um, Sea Line, if they choose to do so, if nowhere else, to the airport. You know, I think that is a good connector, uh, uh, to the, the airport. Once the air, airport, um, is, everybody know the airport is being of the reconstruction now. Uh, my friend just had a presentation on it today, it's going to be beautiful. And so the Sea Line will connect, um, um, to their people mover or what have you, and allow you to go to the airport, um, without having to yield an Uber or what have you. So that's going to be a benefit for those going to the airport. But we just want to make sure that our residents', um, quality of life was protected. You know, so it wasn't about that, we don't want people to take mass transit and don't want them to have, um, the, the option, but we want to make sure it wasn't at the, at the, um, the cost or the expense of our community. Um, we know that there was a big push to get this project through before the Olympics, but we wanted them to slow down, so we can have an opportunity to weigh in. I remember when we took, a few years ago, we went to, um, South Pasadena to look at their project. And one of the walkaways, the takeaways from that is the, when Metro had to come back and to do some mitigation measures or what have you. and to do some mitigation measures or what have you. We don't want you to have to come back and do these mitigations. We want to make sure these mitigation measures are, are upfront, in the design, um, from the start. So, um, a community like South Pasadena probably have a bigger budget than the city of Longdale and can kind of force their hands a little more aggressively to come back and to make those changes or what have you. We're not in those type of financial conditions, so our best, um, um, offense is a good defense. And a defense by making sure that we work with Metro to make sure that all those mitigation measures are in place. And it seems as if there are, that, as you were saying, um, Councilwoman Hoffman, that our next commitment is to totally top off the trench. Now, they have committed to trenching and they said topping off looks like that could happen, but we want to go from a look can happen and is possible to absolute that it will be part of the plans that's adopted by Metro and not just, um, by the staff, something that the staff is recommending, but not necessarily in the, the final, um, project that's approved, um, by Metro. But for the first time, I'm kind of optimistic. Right? They're working with Metro.
Are we pushing the Hawthorne Boulevard first?
Well, we're not pushing, we're not pushing... We're not pushing either alternatives. Our job is to make sure that no matter which alternative they choose, it's the best alternative, it's the best project, have the least amount of adverse impact on our communities. Right? Without us advocating for either one. Now, if you ask me which one they're going to use, smart money say they're going to use their existing right of way because they already own the right of way and don't have to acquire millions of dollars, you know, um, in addition right of ways, um, um, expenditures. Uh, but that's just me. I mean, Metro may decide, no, we don't want to go that way. You know, and, and spend the money. If they can spend the money for that, they can spend the money to, to find a way to top. There's a lot of money Metro, you know, it's all about, you know, how they want to spend the money. And they have the money, trust me. You know, the money is there to top. You know, even if they don't, even if they don't have the money in the quote-unquote budget, as we all know, a budget is exactly what it is, is a budget, it's a guiding principle or what have you. Right? But the agency itself will have the money if they have the political will, even if they need to allocate additional funding or what have you. So we're not going to let them get away with not, with saying, oh, we don't have the money, it's not in the budget. Yeah, that may be true, but you can allocate additional monies, um, to top, so. But in that, I think we're, I think we're making, making progress. And I'm happy to, to, um, to know that we're working out, um, with Westwood Builders, um, so that we won't have an, they won't have to move out of the city because there's no place for them to move in the city if, if, um, our properties, their property was be, um, affected. There's no place, which means we would lose that tax revenue. Not only if they're a good neighbor, uh, a good corporate neighbor, but we would lose the revenue as well. You know?
Anyone else?
I do. On your notes, Kevin, you said, uh, it's going to be a gra- at a grade level crossing, one seventy, one sixty-second, sixty-first, sixty, fifty-ninth, Manhattan Beach and Inglewood. Their original plan from your friends at Metro was to go continue the overhead rail from Marine across Manhattan, across Inglewood and come to ground level between, I think, one sixty, one sixty-first. Now they're talking about trenching it. I don't know how in the heck they're going to trench it across this, they have to build something over there like these. Like you said, Rhonda, they keep changing the minds, so I, I trust, I trust them as far as I can throw them. This is my personal opinion. And then equestering of private properties through eminent domain, that ain't going to fly if Longdale. We don't have eminent domain.
Well, well, I think what the city manager, first of all, um, the city doesn't have eminent domain, but clearly Metro has it. And I think what the city manager was outlining is that these are tools that they could use if they desire to...
Residential property in the city of Longdale? We have, I hope they have a battle.
Yeah, that was a concern that, um, they might need, uh, some residential property for the project. But in, in, in speaking with them at this point, um, there isn't a need to do that.
Okay. And then, you know, it's a funnel, the Condon Corridor is a funnel. At the end, you get down to our, Redondo Beach Boulevard. It's one single track going across Redondo Beach Boulevard. That intersection is going to be a mess for at least a year on this thing. And my other question is, do they bring up the utilities? We have a gas line, I think, gas line, maybe you know about it. The gas line, about one seventy, and some other utility lines going through there. Are they going to relocate them?
Yeah, it's, uh, I, I'm not sure. It's not clear at this point, but it's something we can definitely talk to them about to make sure that...
Okay.
Uh, I'm, 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 I'm pretty sure they understand the utilities that are there. We haven't gotten any word regarding the need to relocate them or not, so.
Okay, well, when you guys talk to them again, ask them about the overhead that they promised first place, over Manhattan Beach and Inglewood Avenue.
Yeah, as of right now, um, that, um, they're, they're saying that the trenching could occur under Manhattan Beach Boulevard as well as Inglewood. So the trenching would be throughout.
Okay.
The only place where there would not be a trench and it would be a different type of a cross would be at Artesia. That would continue to have to be over the, over the Boulevard, over the...
Because I know they, at the beginning, they said it'd be overhead. Continue from this.
Well, either way, you, you, you won't have the, the, the train and the traffic, you know, um, conflict if it's, if it's underground or, or trench, um, there.
Yeah, hopefully.
And it'd look better than overhead, at least to me.
Later on, it was going to half trench it, remember? They were going to half trench it.
Oh, I remember that, when we were over at Uzil.
Yeah.
And now they're promising they're going to trench it. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on, on this item? Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager, for that Metro sea line update. Let's move on to City Manager's report.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Um, just one brief report. Um, I'm pleased to, to let you know that, um, um, I have selected a, an interim finance director to help us with our finance department. Um, we are finalizing the employment agreement with this individual. And, uh, once that is formally signed, I will, uh, announce to you who that person is. Um, but I, I think you'll be pleased, uh, he comes to us with, um, a lot of experience and, and, uh, qualifications to be able to help us, um, in our time of need. Um, in addition to that, um, just to let you know that we are also, um, working with Coff and Associates. Um, they are a professional recruiting firm. Um, they are helping with the recruitment of the permanent, uh, Director of Finance and City Treasurer position. So that recruitment is now underway. Um, it, it's a long haul. It could take ninety, hundred and twenty days, hopefully in that range, um, for us to complete the recruitment, um, select candidates, conduct the interviews, and then hire. So it, it, it is a long haul, but, uh, that process is now underway. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear from Councilwoman Suarez.
Thank you. Um, so I have two items to report. I attended, um, October sixth and seventh, the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority. I believe it's their fall seminar. Basically, um, it's training to kind of go over, uh, panel discussions so that you minimize risk, um, for the agency, um, not having to litigate and all that. Um, so there were some very interesting panels, very happy, um, very informative. Um, there was a, a homeless discussion, um, and I'm glad the mayor brought up, uh, actually wanting to see the data. That is one suggestion that one of the panelists had is, you know, actually requesting, um, the data such as, you know, um, and I think we've tried to, to request that in the past, but, you know, things such as, um, you know, how much has been spent, um, looking at the actual makeup of the homeless population to determine what you actually need. And then also, he brought up measuring, you know, how many are coming in and how many are going out because the numbers still keep, just seem to keep rising and it just means that the, it's increasing faster than we're, you know, resolving the situation. Um, and then another one, great panel was on diversity in the workplace. Um, the speaker did an excellent job, I think, of addressing, um, you know, people that coming from different backgrounds and the kinds of questions you ask, um, to make sure that everybody feels comfortable. Um, and then another one that, um, I was a fan of was social media as it pertains to electeds, um, very interesting stuff. So if any of my colleagues, you know, need any suggestions, I definitely will share with you some of the slides that they brought up, um, to protect the agency as well as yourselves. Um, and then I also did attend the, on October eleventh, South Bay Cities Council Government Steering Committee, um, primarily prepping the agenda for the Board of Directors meeting, which I believe is happening. Um, I don't know if it's this week or next week. Sorry, I can't keep things straight. Um, but other than that, that's all I had, pass it along.
Okay. Councilwoman Quavis?
I just have one request, and I don't know if it could be done. Um, on my walk here, right behind the library on Greville, um, I almost stepped on two dog poops that were left on the sidewalk. So is there any way we could put little signs saying, pick up after your dog or something in that little pathway? Um, or maybe put doggy bags for them to grab a doggy bag and pick up their poop? Um, it's not the first time, it's happened a couple of times, but I kind of, it was my fault, I was on the phone, not paying attention. Um, but I know that that's not the only place. Um, I know that the grass area here, you know, will also find some poop. So maybe we could put a couple of little signs and remind people to pick up after their friends. That will be all.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman Hoffman.
Thank you, I have nothing to report, and I just want to remind everyone that on Saturday, October thirtieth, is our haunted house for Halloween. And, uh, I would encourage everybody to come on out, it's an enjoyable time. Let's just all remember that we need to stay safe, wear our masks, and, uh, come out and enjoy the evening with us. Thank you.
Yes.
I have a couple of things. Um, I also attended with City Manager Robert Verndt at the CJPIA conference. There was a speaker there, I don't know if any of you saw Captain Phillips, a movie? He was one of our speakers and I loved him the best, he was outstanding. And then I attended with City Manager Lobby Trust and Urban Security on ten thirteen via Zoom, and that was interesting, we have a case coming up in Longdale, so I can tell you right now. And Rhonda, I, I want a small correction, it's called the Halloween Haunt. And we don't have a haunted house this year, we have, I believe, a haunted trail? If I'm not mistaken?
Trick or treat trail.
Trick or treat trail, that's it, some kind of trail. And with that, I turn to you, Robert.
Stay away from those trails. That, that's, that sounds like trouble. That sounds like some trouble. Okay, I too attended the, uh, the JPIA, um, Fall Conference and also the Board of Directors meetings, which was held, um, during the conference. And that was actually my first time going to that conference. Um, very good, uh, panel discussions, um, the panel discussion on, uh, well, this was one speaker, on diversity and inclusion. Basically, it's get, it, the speaker talked about the, um, um, how to, what, what the word, the word they used, biases or what have you, implicit biases that people may, um, have about, um, various cultures or what have you and, um, and, and sometimes you may have the tendency to have some types of behaviors that, or reaction that you may not be aware that might be offensive to certain cultures or what have you because maybe you just haven't had interaction with them or what have you. And so to bring us to those, those awareness was, um, pretty good. One of the things he taught us, like, just a thumbs up like this is, in some cultures, is actually, it's not a good thing to do. Uh, I won't go into it, but it, um, it's one of the cultures, like, that's not a good thing to do, although we may say, hey, thumbs up, good job, you know, what have you. Yeah, but just to be aware of those type, types of things, you know, in, in the workplace. And no one knew that either, like, okay, I didn't know that. Can you do thumbs down? No, you might not want to do thumbs down. But it was a great, um, um, conference, um, the public safety panel was great. Um, yeah, Captain Philip, yeah, yeah, he, he was great. I mean, he did, um, a virtual, you know, presentation or what have you. Um, um, even though he was, it was a virtual presentation, that the audience was really captive.
Captive, yeah.
You know? No pun intended, but he had a captive audience. Uh, very good presentation, and the social media, um, presentation was, was well, um, received. And it wasn't just about how to, you know, get more likes and stuff like that, you know, on your social media is basically, you know, bringing it to the awareness that even if you're, if you're a public official, what you may think is your personal social media, um, profile or a page or whatever could very much be a public form and could be very much subject to the Records Acts and things of that nature. Um, you may have inadvertently created a public form and just to kind of give us some education on such. So if we have a social media, um, platforms or what have you, we can govern ourselves appropriately. Unless we want to create a public forum, then that's fine too. Um, I also attended the Boys and Girls Club of Carson's, um, Blue Door Bash. And this is my first time going to the Blue Door Bash. This is their year-end program where they, they highlight, um, um, the youth of the year, um, in their, their programs. And a lot of these, um, the youth, of course, they're going on to college and some have, um, actually are in college now, what have you. So I was invited, um, um, to that event, um, a few days ago and got to see the new stadium at Bank of America. No, it's called Bank of, not Bank of America.
Bank of California.
Bank of California, yeah, Bank of California, yeah. Um, well, you, your, your team plays there, right? What's your team again?
Well, one of my teams, one of several teams. Actually, it's the LAFC Stadium.
Is that what they call it now?
LAFC Soccer Stadium, yeah.
A football team don't play there?
At the Coliseum, that's, uh...
Right next to the Coliseum?
Yeah, uh, the city attorney's favorite team plays up at the Coliseum.
All right, all right, very, very good. Whatever it's called, it's really nice, a really nice stadium. I'll just put it that way, it was a really nice stadium, and it was a really nice event. So, and that's all I have. Okay, with that, we do have, we do have what seem to be ten closed sessions, but there's actually only three, um, three closed sessions, um, conference with labor negotiator, conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, and conference with legal counsel concerning anticipated litigation. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give us the provision for which we would go under.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to go in under Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six on the labor negotiations under five four nine five six point nine D four, considering whether to initiate litigation and under five four nine five six point nine D two and D three, uh, significant exposure to litigation facts unknown to the potential plaintiff. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we will adjourn to closed session. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council, uh, received short briefings on items eleven and twelve and a longer briefing on item thirteen. No reportable action was taken this evening.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Okay, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council would be held at six thirty PM on Monday, November the first, twenty twenty-one. And these chambers is now nine twenty-two, and this meeting is adjourned.